All right, good afternoon, everybody. It is Monday, October 4th, 2021 at 3:04 PM, and I'll call to order the Free Town Border Select meeting. Today, we will be going to executive session and then coming back into open session. One thing to note today is that we have Selectman Zager and Attorney Puji are calling in. So they're not present here, but they are on the phone. So we will be going to executive session for the following two reasons. First, Master General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with public employee union, local 1144, Lyona, or all bargaining units, the Free Town Police Association and the Free Town Full-Time Firefighter Association, because an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body in the chair, so it declares. Also, Master General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body in the chair, so it declares, like cell recycling. First, the town of Free Town. With that, I will entertain a motion to go to an executive session.
Motion made.
Jared, want to second that?
Jared?
All right, I'll second it. He's on the phone. You know, Jared, it might be easier if we just second, if you do the motions like just Jared, just George and I, just since it's on the phone. Does that make sense? So, all right, so I'll second it. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Zager?
I guess I'll say yes.
Yeah.
Selectman Grunwald?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. All right, so we are now in executive session. So we're back in open session now. I'd just like to note that today Jared Zager is here on the phone. He's not feeling well. So first, we have a public hearing. This is a discussion and vote on fuel storage license request from DevCon Innovation Way LLC to locate a 35,000 gallon gasoline and a 35,000 gasoline diesel tank at Zero Innovation Way, plot 236, lot 6.02 in the zone in Mass. So do we have someone representative to discuss this?
Yes, Jim Vertedino with CMG, with the environmental team putting together the fuel license application on behalf of DevCon Innovation Way LLC. I can give a quick introduction. It's relatively simple and straightforward.
Yeah, please do.
I'll just hold up a site plan here. This is some of the last stages of the entitlement process for the proposed development on Innovation Way. Early this year, I believe in January, they received planning and zoning approvals for site plans, special permits, that would allow for a 6,500 square foot convenience store with a drive-through, as well as a 3,500 square foot plus or minus restaurant with a drive-through as well, and also a retail restaurant mix at the northern end of the property. Again, Innovation Way, just a little northeast of the Amazon Distribution Center, just north of the Fall River Town Line. As mentioned in your introduction, review of the public notice, we're seeking to provide 70,000 gallons of total fuel underground, 35 of it being gasoline, approximately 35,000 gallons of it being diesel as well. That will service the convenience store portion, which has five, we call them multi-product dispensers. You pump from both sides, so there's really 10 fueling positions there. Likewise, there is fueling positions for the, called high-speed diesel. You call it high-speed, the pumps pump a little faster because you get a higher volume that has to go into the larger fleet vehicles, tractor-trailer trucks and the like. Located on the southern portion of the property are the three underground tanks that we're seeking permission for to store our fuel in. Other than that, it's pretty straightforward. We've been in contact with the fire department and worked out applications and the like with them. Staff's been great to work with. They kind of guided us through the process, so thank you to them. And then with that, I'll just turn it over to the board for any questions or comments you may have.
Thank you. So the butters have been notified?
Yes, they have.
Is there any butters here today that like to speak or have any questions?
Are these proposed restaurants and people already applying for those licenses?
At those, at this point, I'm not aware of the status of the operating licenses for the restaurants and the like. I'm assuming once they have those lined up, they'll be permits in hand, and tenants, things of that nature, they'll move forward with all their appropriate licensing vehicular. Not vehicular, but...
Dictator.
Yeah, you know what I'm talking about. But before all the restaurants for border health permits, as well as other permits necessary for the operations of a restaurant.
So we'll probably get a third Dunkin' Donuts, Judge. All right, seems pretty straightforward. I don't have any additional questions. George, good. Jared, on the phone?
I do not have any questions. Thank you.
All right, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the fuel storage license requests from DevCon Innovation Way LLC to locate 35,000 gallons of gasoline, 35,000 gallons of diesel tanks at Zero Innovation Way.
Motion made.
Motion. I'll second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Have a great one. So next... So I guess with that, I'll close the public hearing. We're going to move on to our normally scheduled agenda item. So, Glenn, you want to try to do agenda item 22 as soon as possible?
Yes.
All right, yeah, just even asked to do this a little bit out of order. Just up here with everybody, so we're actually going to take it over to border health. So Jared, agenda item 22.
Okay. All right, so we're agenda item number 22, discussion and vote on four here on these Free Town Mass variances for leaking field setbacks to walls and surface water supplies. I read through it, and it looks like it's a system upgrade to something that's obviously close to water, so the impact on that. Do we have anyone present there to speak on it? I'm sorry.
Yeah, Dale? Yes, we do.
Jeff, you have to go over the plan and read off the variances. Do you guys have plans to basically...
Yeah.
Obviously, we do.
I think we do.
If you don't, I have some here if you want to look at.
Do we actually maybe don't specify? We have a list of the potential variants needed.
Do you need a plan to look over?
Yeah, that'd be great.
I have it working well. It's the only...
Thank you.
All the variances listed in the title, I'm going to write this down in the plan.
That's okay. There are eight local upgrades on the plan, and then one Title V variance request, reduction required set text between proposed leaking field and tributaries of certain public surface water supply from 200 to 52 feet. That's basically, the tight tank is located right here, and what we're going to do is put the system back here away from, it'd be closer to the Long Pond, but farther away from Long Pond. Basically, we're putting a Presby system in there, which is an HAD system, and it gives you better treatment. We tried to put it in there as best we could. Try to get it fit in there. It's tight, no matter how you look at it over there.
And so, you know, I guess if this was not done, what would the consequences be of not completing this work, right, for the area around, like the neighborhood or...
Yeah, well, if we don't do it...
Yeah, just out of curiosity, you know.
Well, then we'll have existing tight tank there, I guess.
A tight tank, where Title V and the state look at it, if it's a last resort, it's the last thing you want. It technically is an upgrade to the existing system because it is a tight tank. Tight tanks are generally, you know, they do have problems. They're prone to leaking. If people don't maintain them properly, there's a good chance they can overflow, which would have an impact on the surrounding wetlands and the water. It's better than what's there. It's more environmentally correct for the area to have a leaching field. Obviously, it treats the, you know, the waste water before it goes into the ground. Tight tanks do not do that. They simply are a holding tank in order for way after we maintain them.
Yeah.
I, you know, I reviewed the plan. I've seen a lot of these. It's... I don't have a problem with what they're asking to do. I think it's probably, it's a lot better than what they've got.
Okay. Jared, any questions?
I do not. I mean, you have Dale sitting there saying that, but obviously, I trust his judgment. Do we have, yeah, I guess, I'm sorry, it's kind of tough because do we have any butters that are there waiting to ask any questions?
No, because you guys hear Jared?
Any of you folks have butters?
No.
Do we... Should this have been a public hearing too? I just didn't know we had a public hearing for this, but that's fine.
Yeah, that would have been the only variances that I was more concerned about were the ones to the neighbors' well, and whether or not they had an issue with it. Apparently, they're comfortable with the variance.
Okay.
In terms of...
Admittedly, I'm not an expert in anything of this nature, so I'm going to have to rely on your opinion on this, so... And if you're okay with that?
I don't have a problem.
You have a question? Yeah. Okay, so with that, so I'll entertain a motion to approve these variances.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Grunwald?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes, by the way, we have to roll call because Jared's on the phone. Just to make that clear. And if you don't see me do it, please yell at me because I tend to forget sometimes.
Sorry, guys.
All right. So moving on. So now we're actually going to go, we're going to start off personnel board today. So, George?
We have changed the status for Mark Gaspar, Dr. Montyon, and Seth DiMello as student officers effective November 1st, 2021. Any discussion on that? To approve the status?
Is it, yeah, effective November 1st, right? Yep, no questions. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Grunwald?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
Okay, next, we have the appointment of Beverly Seda to the Library Planning Committee, effective November 4th, sorry, 10/4/21, to 6/30/22. Any discussion?
No, no. I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Grunwald?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
Do you have a copy of the Trahan Memorial Roundabout?
Yeah, I did not see that in the talk yet.
He just requested you read it.
Okay.
He just requested that you read it, so thank you.
This is to thank Lawrence Garnett of Professional Tree and Landscaping. Would like to give kudos to Chuck Maycomb for keeping the Trahan Memorial Roundabout looking good. Mr. Garnett and his company have maintained the Trahan Memorial for over 10 years with flowers, mulch, bushes, and much more. The Board of Selectmen would like to recognize both gentlemen and thank them for all their hard work.
Very nice.
We have an agreement between Isabel Ferrera and the town of Free Town.
Just have to approve the agreement.
Have we heard back from that yet?
Yep, it's all signed.
Oh, it's all signed, all right, great.
Need a vote to approve the...
Yeah, just to explain, so it's $40 an hour for Isabel, or... Yeah, sorry, this is for, am I reading the right one?
You are.
Yes, Isabel.
Yeah, so just for us to continue to use her services on a part-time basis to help transition the new hire to take the, for this, mostly payroll related stuff, right? Okay.
So entertain a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Grunwald?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to appoint Isabel Ferrera as Department Assistant, effective 10/5/21 through 10/30/21. Any discussion?
No, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Grunwald?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
I would like to rescind the appointment of Patricia Rodrick as Treasurer/Tax Collector, effective 9/27/2021 through 6/30/22.
Can we just talk about, you know, can we just talk about this? What's this exactly, how's this happening here? So we're rescinding the appointment?
So it came to our attention, the town clerk mentioned to us that we can only have one person appointed to that position at a time, so we had some overlap when Patricia started the job. Jessica was still holding the position. So as of 10/1, Patricia is actually in the position. So you just have to rescind it and reappoint her.
All right, makes sense to me. All right, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Grunwald?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
Appoint Patricia Rodrick as Treasurer/Tax Collector, effective 10/1/2021 through 6/30/2022.
Make that motion?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Grunwald?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. All right. I think that's all personnel. All right, moving on, so agenda item 11. Meeting minutes from 9:16 2021. I'll entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes from 9:16 2021.
Motion made.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Grunwald?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. So now, moving on, agenda item 11 is discussing the archival audit and conditions of archival retention program at the Old Schoolhouse. And we'll have to vote to have one of the Selectmen work with King's Information System and the town clerk on this project. So I, do the board have an opportunity to read the report we got from them on the condition of this schoolhouse and how the files are being stored there right now? And Cheryl, you want to?
Cheryl.
Okay, great, thank you.
So Cheryl Estrella, Free Town Town Clerk with me. I have a representative for King Information Systems, Paula McDonald. They are our current archival partner. So in front of you, as she's getting set up, she'll show you some photos of the current condition. And some of you may have done a walkthrough with me at some point of our, where we have our records stored. Currently, that is in the Old Schoolhouse, next door to the Town Hall. There's quite a few, quite a few issues over there. It was originally, all of our records were stored in the basement of Town Hall, but back in 2018, there was a decision to be made to move all the records over to the Old Schoolhouse. At that point, which was at a cost to the town, at that point, they were able to cement the floor because it was a dirt floor, but it has not received any attention since then. We are currently out of compliance with state regulations. You may or may have not either seen the photos, or Paula will be putting those up for you just momentarily. But there has been rat feces. There is a smell of mold and mildew. The boxes are now deteriorating. Some of the books that are there are now warped due to the moisture content. There is standing water there. I know about two weeks ago, when I went into that building, they looked like the building inspector probably started a cleanup process and getting some of that spider webs and rodent issues cleaned up, but again, that's not up to par. So we could discuss that. It's actually a two-part request, hoping to the work of one of the Board of Selectmen or the new interim Town Clerk, Deb Petty, in regards to being obligated to comply with state regulations and as well as to what we're going to do going forward in regards to records retention. So we do have the letter in front of you, the memo, excuse me, that shows the proposal for an archival audit currently. An audit should be done one, two years, every two years. That hasn't been done since. The Town Clerk's office itself has been using King Informations for our own interdepartmental records retention for quite a number of years. I've been in Town Hall for eight, and since I've been in Town Hall, that's what we use. And then back in 2018, again, we brought it on as, you know, rather than each department holding on to their own records, they were going to do the archival retention for all departments. But that needs to be addressed so that we are in compliance. So they are, how we do it, we agree.
No, they're perfect.
So at this time, I'll introduce again Paula McDonald from King Information Systems, and she'll give you a brief overview, and then I think she has time for questions that we can answer.
Great, thank you.
Hi, thank you. Blake Joel just said, in August I was here and I took a look at the archives that were over in the school, the old school building. We implemented that system in May of 2018, and we usually, and that was an over $20,000 investment for the town, not only to preserve the history of the town, but also to ensure the day-to-day activities of the town. We always recommend an archival audit. Depends on the size of the audit, whether it's per year, every year or by, you know, every other year. And unfortunately, there hasn't been an archival audit performed in the past three and a half years. And no one's fault, you know, the COVID and the former town clerk retired. And, you know, we understand that things get put on the back burner, especially, you know, old records. But the, I have a few slides here that I'd like to show you that I took while I was there. The very first thing that I noticed when I walked in, I couldn't capture it in a photo because it was the smell. Very, very musty, damp. And like Cheryl had said, there is rotten feces there. Sorry. There's also, there's no HVAC at all. There is no cooling, there's no heating, there's nothing like that. So the environment is not a good place for records, any kind of records. Some of the problems, as I had mentioned in my findings in the letter that I discussed out. Some of these problems is the high humidity, gaps in buildings, just plain poor housekeeping. Some of the boxes have been chewed. That indicates, you know, there's rodents in the building. There is also, you can see on this one, you can't tell exactly what it is, but I would say they've been chewed.
Can I just introduce us on this photo? So as you can see, there is no insulation in that building. The ceiling is falling through. That is a one pane glass window. There, I'm not sure if there's even a fire suppression system in there. I'm not sure if there's smoke alarms in there. That is the history of Free Town, out left open into the elements. Pictures are a thousand words, are worth a thousand words. If you could, you would be appalled if you had walked in there. You know, those windows not being secure at that street level is very concerning. I'm sorry, Paula, go.
As you can see, this is the ceiling up there. There is no insulation, you know, the wires are wide open to the area. And you can also tell on these books that there's mold and mildew that's developing.
And the pages are absorbing the moisture. That's why you can tell they're warped. And I just left out the open, such a mina.
There's standing water in there. And we know, you know, that that's, that can go grow mold as well. That's not a good environment to have.
Is that water, is that catching like a leak from the ceiling?
No, what I believe that is, is ice melt that someone had placed there. If you notice the bags in the background, which brings up another issue too. It's supposed to be an area for records only. I know we're all short in space throughout town. We've moved some file cabinets in there, we've moved some desks in there, but things like that. Then you have a chair pad. That was one of the reasons why they moved from the basement over to the schoolhouse, because the basement started becoming a dumping ground for all sorts of stuff.
And I think it's important, like, we only want, you know, someone who has the permissions or the rights to go in to look at these, you know, pull these documents, right? We've got to have some kind of security. Like, so it couldn't be, it can't really be a multi-purpose storage facilities.
Correct. That is the ceiling, or what's left of it.
You know, and you've got books there, which we always do that when we set up some, you know, an archive system is put books up on the top. But obviously, with the ceiling, you know, all, everything falling out of that ceiling, those records are just going to get destroyed. And these are just some pictures of...
You can't really see in the pictures, but every window, every, they've got the spider webs, they've got nests, the rodent feces. It was hard to capture in photos.
Yeah. And this is on the inside, this is on the inside of the window. If you can tell, there's nothing, there's nothing preventing anyone from going into that building. I'm just more of a... I like this one because you can tell that those are spider apes. You know, it's really not a suitable location at all for your archive records.
How many boxes do we have total, stored?
Oh, gosh.
Probably around 500.
About 486, I think was the last box number. But currently, so currently, if you go into Town Hall, there are boxes from the Board of Selectmen's office and other departments too, but on the second floor, the hallway, which is now causing another issue. You know, it's not, it's, you know, God forbid if there's a fire, that's, that's impeding the hallway there. So we need to move those, but I don't see the sense of moving them to the schoolhouse if this is where we're at this point.
Yeah.
And in regards to what's in those boxes, which brings us over to the audit portion of that, because there are, when the transfer happened from the basement of Town Hall over to the schoolhouse, some of the files were just put into a box. So there's about a dozen to 20 that are labeled as miscellaneous files. So those certain departments have to go through, you know, and no one has staffing or time to go through and actually itemize what's in those boxes. Because the transfer, I believe, from the basement to the schoolhouse next door with a crew of three or four from King's, I think, took a total of four days.
So is that, is figuring out what's in those boxes, is that something that King can provide as a service?
That was for that audit?
That's a part, that's a part of the audit?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, updating the database, going through, we can do a shelf-by-shelf audit, pull up the boxes, re-box the ones that are damaged. You really need to get those put into another location as soon as possible.
Yeah, so that's the big problem.
Yes.
That's the big problem.
Right?
And then doing, you know, right now, every department, once they have, they complete their ARMU forms and gotten permission from the state to destroy those records, some of them will call, shred it, and they're kind of all left on their own to kind of destroy those records. So with the help of King Informations with their yearly order, when they come in, they can do a data entry, a data, you know, instead of like staging areas, put boxes in, have a staging area for boxes of records that need to be destroyed, and then all the departments can kind of get it done in all, in one swell.
Yeah, yeah, I got you.
Rather than having to keep going in there and pulling certain things at different times.
And then if there's been microfiche?
The town clerk's records have been microfiched through actual King Information Systems and we have discs that have all of our records that date back to 1683. And we're up to 2018. So what we do in order to save money is we get three or four years' worth of documents. They get microfiche scanned, put on a CD. We actually have a copy for town clerk records stored off-site, so God forbid if anything happens, we still have access to that. And then I have the original books in, certain original books, especially the vital records in our vault, which is now completely over capacity as well. But that's a separate issue.
I have seen that.
And you have seen that, yes.
So ti- timeline here, right? Like, we'd want to figure out where these records are gonna go before we start kickoff this audit, right?
So that, that is the biggest issue. So do you spend time and money and allocate it to the schoolhouse building to bring it up to par so that we are in compliance with state regulation? Or do we find a place to store those records?
Yeah.
A lot of, a lots of the departments in, in town buildings, we all are experiencing the same issue. We don't have the space.
And that's why they will put a warrant to the old school building, because in the old, in the town hall, there is no space available for a central archive system.
At the basement, you're in a flood zone.
Yeah.
And you actually, the ceilings are very low and the grant posts have disintegrated to the point that we now have tree trunks holding up town hall.
Familiar with that?
Previous building inspector has also stated that we can't add any more weight to that building. So that building, I believe, was built in 1888, so we're over 130 years old.
That's great.
I know there's plans and there was a feasibility study done back in 2013. But again, you know, a lot of the buildings were left alone for so long that we're in this situation today. Where every building, besides the beautiful police station, is in need and that was just, you know, opened in December, so. What do we do? Do we have the space? Do we have alternative space that we can store these records?
So is there space in this building?
From my understanding, and I have not had this conversation with the chief of police, and I have not, I haven't taken a tour of the building. Supposedly there is a second floor that is built. I'm not sure if it's insulated, if it's finished, if there's any AC, the piping's been done.
Because also, it needs to be, it needs to be safe for you to get up there, like, you know, we're talking like an attic? Are we talking about, like, we want to figure that out?
Yeah, I'm not sure. They just, I've just always heard the second floor. Again, I, I haven't seen it. I don't know what, what the access is
Yeah.
to over there. I don't know if it's gonna be in compliance.
It's part of the second floor. Do you don't have to climb any ladders or anything?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. And what's that space currently being used for, anything?
I think, from my understanding, it's not, it's not finished yet. It's one of the things that the police station subcommittee is talking about.
Okay.
About a weatherproof back area upstairs. So we're also working on HVAC system problems that we're having. So we wanna iron all of that outside before I can say yes or, before anybody can really
Yeah.
say yes or no, but there is space.
Upstairs is plenty of space.
Yeah.
Upstairs, you also have heat already up there. In fact, there was discussion at the last police subcommittee meeting about including HVACs, not the air conditioning. It already has heat, so.
It's not regulated right now upstairs, and that's one of the things that we're looking for.
Okay.
How many square feet do we have?
Massive amount of space.
How many square feet do you know?
I don't remember.
You know, the town hall there.
Yeah.
Yes.
And after the town hall, really?
Oh, definitely.
And I, you know, I understand that police station was built, you know, for the future and what's gonna happen with town growth and all. So my intention is not to come in and utilize their space and take over their space. It's, it would be, again, a temporary solution.
Yeah, temporary, maybe a couple of years, probably.
Correct.
You also might wanna check out the school too, because there's space at the school.
The elementary school?
Mm-hmm.
That's a good idea.
And we have like, the bottom floor, there's, yeah, the bottom floor, there's space there.
All right, well.
One other question would be too, would be accessibility, because again, you can't.
Sorry.
Not, not anyone can just walk in there, so we'd have to set that up.
Yeah, that's like, that's the thing. You're probably the same kind of situation, police station or any, any, any school, right?
Wherever you go.
Which we want, somewhere that's not just stuff.
That's just another, another.
Yeah.
Paul. You could get containers, conditioned containers and, and place them.
We, yeah, we could, I mean, but from just a cost perspective, it might, if we already have some spaces that we can utilize, especially like, I like to look at the elementary school and here, you know, and utilize that. I think that, you know, I think that's, if we, if the, these other two solutions are potential, things do not work out, I think that's what we have to do. Right? But I'm, I don't know what those costs are, but I can imagine they're not cheap to have a climate-controlled, you know, pod or whatever, you know, shipping container. Yes?
The schoolhouse, a number of years ago, I grabbed and secured my historical just to make it wider type. It was riding away. It's been there for years, as you can see just from these minor pictures.
Yeah.
It's not something, in my opinion, to have the town spend money on that move. If we're gonna do anything, we should consider a town hall.
Yeah, I.
Don't keep wasting taxpayers' money.
I hear you.
Do you want to have Paula continue? Just to wrap this up, if I don't feel anything else, you wanna?
I just do, I do wanna mention one thing. When we do an archive system and when we implement one for customers, some customers, they do everything. They, you know, add the boxes to inventory, they pull boxes for destruction, they hand out box numbers, they, they do everything. I have other customers who don't do anything. And, but what they do do is hand out box numbers to the departments who request them. They put those boxes in a holding area. We come in once a year, we take all those boxes, we add them to inventory, we update the database, we pull all the records of destruction. We set those aside, so then it's just up to the town to get the authorization from the state, have somebody come in and shred those documents. That's another, that's another possibility. It doesn't necessarily have to be the town clerk. It even states in one of the, I have bulletins in the little packets there. It could be any.
Just outlines everything for you?
Any person within the town hall can take over the archive system. It doesn't have to be the town clerk. It could be Indian outside vendor, it can be, you know, a shred company or, or a storage company, something like that, that can come in and do it, and that's what we do. So it doesn't necessarily have to be the clerk.
Yeah, so, so you're saying you could provide that service as well?
Yeah.
Right? To, to, to get everything ready to be sent to shred it or whatever, whatever.
We can even move the archives for you when you finally find a, a place. We can come down and actually take the equipment, you know, remove the boxes, take down the, the shelving, bring it over, put it back up, put the shelves back, put the boxes back on the shelves. And then also, we can do the archive audit at the same time and update the database.
Okay, that's what I'm asking, so.
Because the, the database currently is.
Three and a half years old.
It's outdated.
But you don't do storage?
We do storage as well.
Oh.
Yeah.
That's another service that they do provide.
Yeah, which I think is something to at least talk about, but, you know, depending on what physical location those are in, Cheryl needs to pull, you know, some kind of record or any one of the town hall needs to pull record, it, you know, it makes it a little more of a, of a situation to get, get those brought down here. Figure out where exactly the records even are, right? Say like hypothetically, they're on the wrong box, you have to go back and forth and, I don't know.
And we do that. We store for, we store for banks and credit unions, insurance companies, towns.
Yeah.
And they just call us if they need a document. And I would recommend keeping maybe current and a couple of years' worth on site.
Yep.
That would take up a lot less space. Send the older records to us for storage. If you need a document, you call us and we can retrieve it for you.
On site, yeah.
Well, that's what we have to figure out first.
So she's also got some photos here, if you wanna take a look of actual completed projects in other municipalities, that you can see how theirs are done. I know, obviously, you've done the town of Avon, who's very pleased with you. I personally know the clerk up there.
Well.
But as you can see.
If that's.
So that's what it should, should look like.
Yeah.
That is what it should look like.
It's in Avon's own storage, but not.
Avon has their own storage area, yes, yes. And they're, I think, a town of 6,800, so they're a little smaller than we are, but same, we're very similar in a lot of different ways.
And again, it really doesn't matter the size of the town.
It doesn't, yeah, it doesn't matter.
The same amount of records that the town has. Like Wallfleet, we've set up their archive system for them. And in the 50s, their entire town hall burnt down. The only thing they had left was the, was the vault. So they didn't have a ton of records. You know, so it, it really doesn't depend on that. It kind of just depends on the amount of records that you have. And this is our storage facility. You can see we have.
And they have massive space and something, which is nice too.
Yeah.
Because we're not dealing with someone out in California, you know?
Right.
Have you compared costs for storing a, a company's facilities versus ours?
No, I have not done that. We have always stored our own records with a backup over at King, especially with the town clerk's records. So that wasn't an avenue I even explored before this meeting, because there's several different issues.
Oh, so that's like something.
And that's why I'm here today, is to ask the board's help to get on this and, and find a solution.
Yeah.
Do you have, do you have preferences as to the way you'd like to see it?
Well, it's always, it's nice to have your own records and, and have the originals with you, rather than start off-site. That way, in case emergency happens or someone, something immediately, you're close enough. You're not relying on a third party. But again, it all depends.
I totally agree. We always try to get, you know, we find this, we find a place to put these archives. And the reason they were putting the old school building is because it was supposed to be renovated. So that's why they got put over there initially. And obviously, that hasn't happened, so the, the records are really deteriorating rapidly.
All right, so I think, yeah, I'm all about going forward with this. I think we should have one selectman. I think, per, you know, the agenda here, it kind of makes sense to have one selectman be the point of contact. I think also I'd like to include Debbie, you know, have her kind of drive this. And just so we can kind of, we don't have to bring this back in front of the board a bunch of times. You know, do we have consensus? I think we all, do we have consensus that this, something needs to be taken care of?
Yeah, absolutely.
I think there's a lot of, you know, we have to go down a couple of different avenues to figure out where makes the most sense to store these, whether it's one of our town buildings or whether maybe it is a third-party site, you know, I'm, I'm open to all suggestions and, you know, work through that, but.
I just wanna make a correction real quick.
Yeah.
Paula had mentioned that the building was supposed to be renovated. It wasn't completely, supposed to be completely renovated, but that room, the storage area in the basement was, was supposed to be put up to par.
Yeah.
So to speak, so not completely, because I know that was, there was discussions of possibly uniting both buildings and such, but it wasn't a definite plan, but there was a, a plan and an understanding to have that brought up to par.
Do you have a recommendation of what you'd like to see?
I'd like to see the records out of there, if we're not gonna spend the money.
No, that's given, but where?
I, I don't, I don't know, to be completely honest with you, George, I think every avenue is worth exploring. I don't have that answer for you today. I don't think it's, it should be my call only. I'd love to hear input. I loved how Lisa mentioned the Free Town Elementary School. That's an avenue I'd love to take a look at. I just, I know that they can't be there any longer.
Yeah.
I think if you wanted to get it done really quickly, you should do some tours of the building. Have people go in, see what that looks like down there. That is, when you look at the pictures, I can actually smell it.
I've never been there and I could almost smell it, so.
Yeah.
I don't think there's any question that we need to do this, but.
Yeah.
What we're going to do.
Yeah, so I think Debbie, you know, and Cheryl can, you know, drive this forward and get something done pretty quickly. Right? So I'll entertain a motion to have myself with Debbie Petty and Cheryl move forward with, you know, with the, working with King's information systems to come to a resolution on this situation.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Grunwall?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
We might need like have a form, another vote on that to kind of formalize like what that really means and maybe put some parameters around how it gets done, but let's just, at least get this started, you know, worry about that kind of stuff later on. All right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
I appreciate it. Okay. Next is discussion on the council and aging warrant article and update on our building options. So I know we recently got some updated figures on how much the council on aging building estimated costs are gonna be. And they've increased substantially. I think this agenda items really just kind of make the town aware of that, since this is, you know, there's an article in the warrant. There's sort of town for town meetings, so I wanted to just kind of talk about that generally. And I don't know if anyone has any questions or concerns. So.
I have a question.
Yes.
I never, I never saw anything except for just some discussion on combining the, the library and senior center together.
Yeah, I think the, so it is one of the options, I think, that we asked for, you know, to be put together by the compass group here, but it ended up being, it's like, the last thing I saw in here, I think it was like $13 million, which seems extremely, you know, expensive compared, and I, and I don't really know why. I was actually thinking about this a lot today. I think it's the specific, like, to be technically a library, all the specific things you need to have, I think really drives up the cost a lot. Paul?
My understanding, that's only if we, we rely on the state, okay?
Yeah.
To fund the library, the specific building parameters that you have to use. For a library that you wanna do yourself, okay, it's not gonna cost you $13 million.
Yeah. And I think maybe there was a miscommunication or like, maybe we should talk to, you know, the compass group about that, yeah.
I just feel like this, this whole thing is just so confusing to everybody, because we really seriously don't know where, who's driving this. It's not the building committee anymore, because, so I don't know, we, we don't have a recommendation, because we never even, the building committee never even explored the options.
Yeah.
It was kind of like, I know that there was a warrant article by petition and that's kind of where it stemmed from, but, I mean, I just feel like it's very confusing and it's confusing for me, and I've been on several building committees. It's gonna be confusing to the taxpayers.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Now, I know that you've been in the library.
It's, it's amazing what they've done in there. It, it's really, really beautiful. They, they're doing a lot of work. A lot of children's things, a lot of things for the elderly, a lot of things for the community. And yet upstairs, we now have a squirrel infighting.
We've got squirrels in the wall.
In the walls.
Wall.
It's not good.
And we can't spend money on that facility, because we don't know.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
Familiar with that situation. It's a very unfortunate situation there as well, just generally.
I think the issue is very complicated, as we can see here, because we, we have more than one issue. But last year, at the annual town meeting, the town did vote to do an upgrade to the COA. And we basically haven't moved on that. We had some reports and they included a combined library and COA. But that was, you know, a huge expense. It was, what, $13 million?
Estimated cost, and these are big estimates.
Yeah, but.
The building committee never saw that.
Well, I don't know where.
The building committee never saw it.
Yeah.
No, that came from.
No, it is.
Yeah.
I agree with you.
It came from Andy.
Well, it didn't actually, the building committee.
Well, I know that, but.
Okay.
No, but, I, I don't know.
If you have a building committee for the town, George, how can people be going around the perimeter and not going to the building committee? We were official building committee for, not only for the police station, but for the town.
Who asked for this? Who asked for this?
Huh?
Who asked?
I have no idea.
I don't know.
So it's a COA, obviously, right?
No, the building committee did.
What building committee?
The building committee. Paul, you were there as well as Lisa was there, and that recommendation, building committee recommended that firm to do the thing, to do the upgrade for $7,000. It was nothing to do with the COA on that, that design.
I'm gonna explain it. This is what happened, Trevor. After the article.
Could you address the whole board, Lisa, please?
Please?
Could you address the whole board?
I'm going.
I mean, I, I put this on the table. I think that's.
I'm going through the chair, that's why. So if the chair, I'm only going through the chair for her, here to recognize me. I'm speaking to everybody in this room at the same time.
Yeah, please continue.
Thank you. So the confusion was, is that after the warrant article got passed for the $550,000, there was no plan, right? So the building committee jointly with the COA had a meeting and we wanted to discuss all options.
Yeah.
It was presented, but there was never any, anything else after that, right? So there was never, this is what we're gonna do, this is not what we're gonna do. There were always three things. It was either gonna be in addition to the building, a new building, or a joint COA library.
Correct.
But after that report there, there was nothing else that came back.
Nothing came back to the, so I, I think that.
Who asked for this report, first of all?
It was all, it, it was the building committee and the COA when we met as a joint group. There were three options that were linked.
COA is shaking its head over there.
That, that's, but that doesn't, that's, falls in line with my memory of, of the, or events. And then what happened after that? We had a meeting here, there was a joint meeting with the COA and the board of selectmen, and we kind of went through the different options and we decided to go with the,
Option one.
With option one, scheme two.
Yes.
Right?
That's true.
That, so, so then, that's kind of the last thing I remember specifically on this. We still had estimated, you know, the cost because of the nature of, of building, of construction cost. We still had estimated co- you know, the cost, because of the nature of of building, of construction cost right now, there was not really any, a lot of very flexible cost there. And what's happened since then to today is that we've done updated costs, and there, it it's gonna be a lot more money than than the original as expected cost. That's the only thing that's changed.
The original was like around two million, one point nine, I think.
So, yeah, something, I I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I, it's, it went up a substantial percentage, you know, as a percent of the cost, but tha- it is what it is.
What is it now?
The the uh, this, according to this, which we got recently, is two point five, so scheme one is two point eight, scheme two is two point five. Which, in the, the real, the heart, the problem here, right? From my understanding is that because of, you know, the, the value of the property is so low. Almost any investment we put into that property is gonna require, trigger, all these new ADA requirements. So, like, like, and I think the majority of this cost is tied up with those things, so even if we scale back. There's no way we can scale back far enough to not trigger all the, all the ADA requirements. Right, is is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes, please.
Uh if you look at the last page on that, and if you look at the minutes prior to today, which I've done, a lot of research on this. If you look at the minutes that were presented the last few times, you'll find that on uh. One of those meetings, we requested, I think it was at the last one, we requested from that compass group. To give us a number on exactly what the council on agent originally had asked for.
Yeah.
Now, the last page is about as close as it gets to what we had gone to town meeting, and it was a year ago, it was two years ago. Nineteen, but uh that last page is more of what aligning we were talking about at the meeting.
I see, yeah.
And I think if you look at the minutes in the meeting on that day, I think it was July thirteenth. You'll see that it reflected in there that uh, that uh, he was asked to come back with the, with the price. Of what we, council on agent originally wanted, and I believe it's pretty close to what's the last page on that, on that document.
So, yeah, so this be, this is the minimum expansion to the existing COA building, so i- it ends up, estimated here is, you know, it's six hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. Now, does that, so does that include a elevator?
No, it does not, it doesn't include the elevator, uh but the uh.
Okay, yeah, so I see it here, so it says, so this option would require a variance from Massachusetts Architectural Association Board, Access Board, sorry. Pursuant to five twenty-one CMR, so that means, so we like, we're we're trying to kind of have our cake and eat it too. Just trying to minimize, but, you know, get all the things we we really need out of this. Without triggering all the ADA requirements, right? Which I have no experience doing this, I have no idea if that's even possible, right? Like, what are the chances that they would actually let us do that?
Well, until we.
Till we try, I get you, and also, there's a.
At the meeting, Andy said, chances of getting that waiver was slim.
Yeah, I'm, I I, that's my, my memory of that as well. Um and also it says it doesn't, doesn't resolve any of the existing issues or concerns such as the HVAC or plumbing, all that other stuff. And then also, like, it's one of those things, if we're gonna do it, like, I know there's a, a, part of the study was kind of looking at the different programs. That are being run there, and and, you know, what what we'd like to be able to do there, you know, and that's, it's an expensive thing to do, right? I mean, I, I'm of the thought that, if we're gonna do it, do it right, I don't wanna throw good money after bad, you know, that one, so I don't know.
Do anything at that senior center, really, they used to do trips, they used to do all kinds of things, but nothing, not. Notwithstanding COVID, that is what's happened, I'm talking, you know, just previously, you know, to that.
I mean, I think, I'm I'm not sure, I can't really speak to that, you know, um what, and I know there are some important things that are done in there. And I think that there's opportunity for other, you know.
But how does that relate to the building, not following your train of thought?
How does it relate to the building, okay, so you you want this upgrade, and I think that people feel better. When they walk into a place like that, it gives, it gives everyone um the opportunity to plan these different things. Like they had before, they, I I don't know, I I don't know if it's just aptly or what, but. The seniors that have, that are there now, um they love it, they they're, they're there all the time, they're, they're the heart of that group. But there are many seniors that are sitting home, not doing anything either, you know, and and you need something to, to bring them in. You know, I, that's the way I feel about it.
Yeah.
And could you address that?
Paul, that, that was our intention when we first came, came to the selectmen, with the ten-foot, we only wanted about ten foot by thirty foot long. And then after the discussions that we had, more importantly, about what were the future use for being the building. Uh should there be a new senior center down the road? And that last page is pretty much what Andy was, I believe, was challenged to do. To go off twenty, twenty-seven feet and twenty foot out wide, and the intention is exactly what you had said there. The fact that we're gonna, we wanted to put downstairs a room where the seniors could come, have coffee. And and donuts, and gather, and socialize, and and the second floor would be to expand the pool room up there. Into other activities that they could do, with the ten-foot by twenty, that would just give us the rooms that we had in there. So I mean, uh and the drawing on the back that you have, that just explains that. Go off twenty feet, like I said, later on down the road, it uh, it goes to a town building. It, that that room could be used for building department, plumbing department, and things like that, but we're trying to open a senior center up right now. So we can get more activities for the seniors, the the biggest challenge we have now is that, they're, they're actually doing activities out in the pavilion. Which we can't move in once the winter is.
Right, right.
I mean, it's 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 in.
I understand that.
So, that's kind of why we want to expand and not go two point eight million. I mean, we're having a hard time wrapping our heads around two point eight, one point nine million, you know, I mean, our seniors pay taxes in town as well as everyone else. And to run it up, but I think the conversation is that if we go with that last plan, and I'm not trying to say we go with it, because.
I think there's big, like, potential issues of it, I mean, that is not even realistic.
Five hundred and fifty thousand dollars right now, in in the, in the bank, right?
Yeah.
Alright, I know, I don't know where the five fifty came for this warrant article, but based on what compass group has, has given us there. If we do go with that last option, minimum amount, that would give us one point one million dollars. And if his recommendation was six seventy-two, now if you get a limited access uh elevator in there. I don't know what they cost, but the estimated cost for a full-blown elevator, elevator has been discussed, is about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But we think, in conversations that I've had with other contractors, they're saying that the el- the limited access, limited uh. I can't remember what, what the whole figure, I didn't break my documents, but uh would be around a little under a hundred thousand. Just for a wheelchair and one other participant, you know, to hold him in, so that there, if you add that to the six seventy-five. You're you're uh, you know, seven, seven se- seven ninety-five, I guess, or seven seventy-something? And then you'd have the other access, but again, you are correct about the fact that, I don't know what just that twenty-seven by twenty. Would uh facilitate in in doing the rec, you know, upgrading the ADA and all that.
Yeah, yeah, and that's, I think that's where the majority of the cost is gonna come in, and and like it. And compass group says right here, like compass group, architecture does not recommend this option, you know, like they're pretty clear about that, so. And I, I think that these are all good discussions to have, I think, Lisa, to Lisa's point earlier, we need to figure out the structure of this and how this moves forward. I think after, so this warrant's on town meeting, right, it's it's gonna be voted on, right? I think after that, we need to have the COA and building committee work together to actually, to find, figure out how, like, maybe it's a subcommittee, combine of both groups. To see who's gonna really drive and lead this to to the finish line, make this, make these kind of final decisions, you know, actually get this done. So I think that there there is confusion right now, and it's, it's kind of discombobulated.
At that last meeting, that joint meeting, we took a vote.
We did.
We took a vote for option two, to make it a real senior center that we wouldn't have to worry about five years down the road.
I I agree with you there, so now, the the thi- we did vote, but I think we voted on moving forward with that, but we still haven't, I got, like, these are estimated. Cost, we still haven't gone to bid, we haven't done a lot of, you know, I think there's a lot more work that needs to be done here, and I think we need the right people at the table to drive that, to drive that one. Right, I mean, that that's.
What people are we talking about?
We, like, like, there was a subcommittee of police station subcommittee, right? And I'm, I wasn't involved before then, but I, you know, see the plaque when I come in, I know that, that that was, because you need someone who's making these, like, kind of. Not day-to-day, but pretty much day-to-day decisions, and actually getting it over the hump. I think if we have, I think it needs to be, the COA needs to be involved, we also need other folks who are, uh have expertise in this type of project.
So, we should have a committee of two or three people from the COA?
Yeah.
And then whoever else from building committee?
Yeah, I think that's something that we, maybe put that as a gen item in the future, try to figure that out, um I'm not sure exactly how we go about that, but that's something we need to do.
Well, should vote on that today, can we uh, can we do that?
That's not on our agenda.
Not on the agenda, it's kind of case, like, you know, I think we want to think about this a little more and make sure, you know, we have to get the right people involved, who's gonna be involved, who wants to be involved?
Well, uh.
The structure of the board.
We have a town meeting coming up in a few weeks, and uh. I would hate to see voted down, if if we could get some kind of consensus between now and then of where we wanna go. If we could at least get the number correct on the article, we could change it, you know.
So like, just because you're saying the the additional five?
Yeah, yeah, could change the amount, so that at least.
Well, so I think that, like, that, like, we can, the ta- we have enough money to afford, whatever the difference is, I think, in the town if we need to, right?
Doesn't have to be approved by the town meeting.
Yeah, well, but, but, like, we have plenty of in the war chest right now to to get us to that point, and then when we can vote, I think, in the future to pay that out of. You know, because of capital civilization fund.
No problem, there's no problem there.
Yeah.
Correct. Uh but what needs to be done this year, so that we don't have to wait for the annual town meeting, this has already been kicked down the road two, three times.
So you're, so you're requesting that we ask for the full total amount, we, I don't think we can at this point, because the warrant's already been posted.
The warrant's been uh, been closed and posted, and if we increase the amount on the warrant article by that amount. Um we're not, we're not giving people enough notice that, that that's the amount. You know, they might, they might not come out for five hundred and fifty thousand, but they might come out if it's two point five million. So we can, we can tweak it up a little bit, but not that substantial.
And and I think that, like.
Well, it's a start, it's a start.
And exactly, and and that money's gonna be, there's gonna be a lot more of like, you know, like, going to the actual architectural designs and the site work, and all the other stuff, like. That money's gonna get used for part of this, and we're gonna have to get more and more money anyways, I think, you know, yeah.
One, one last question, when that article was, warrant article was drafted up, when did we get the number of five fifty? Because at the last meeting we had, I think we just mentioned that it, that the compass group came in at one point nine. And and on the, on the warrant article, it's five fifty, where it probably should have been like one point four.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure on that one, that's a good question.
It looks like it might have been just a repetition from the article that was submitted two, a year, year or so ago. But I mean, five fifty, if we, at the last meeting in July, when compass came in at one point nine, I know it's two point eight.
Yeah.
Point five now, but it was one point nine at that point, and then the five fifty comes on the warrant article, it was still underfunded on the warrant article.
Yeah, I hear you, I think a part of that too is that the language of that first warrant was, it was somewhat restrictive on what we could use the money for. And then this one was a little more broad, it was just, it's additional monies that we have, you know, more flexibility with, right, that's my understanding of it. Yep.
I, I thought that coming up with the special town meeting, we'd have an article saying, see if the town would vote to approve. The expansion and remodeling of of the uh, of the senior center.
Mm-hmm.
For one point nine million.
Yeah.
And had we done that, even now, with the prior amount that they have already received, we could have done it, I don't, I don't.
Yeah, no, I I hear you, I I think, I think a part of the problem was, yeah, sorry, Lisa, what?
It's okay, but again, there's a process, right, that you have to go through in order to bring it to town meeting. You have to go through the engineering services, you have to have exactly what you're gonna need in order to go to town meeting. The five fifty will go towards the, the engineering services, they'll come up with a hard number for you. Design, all of that, and then, and then you'll have the final, you know, because you'll go all the way to construction documents, but you're gonna need. Not only that five fifty, and the other five fifty is not gonna cover the whole thing.
Which I don't think we ever thought it would, and when, when, at least the interpret, like, what I've heard from compass group when they were. When you originally started explaining all the additional costs because of the ADA requirements, all this stuff, it seemed pretty apparent that this would be a lot more money than we initially thought. And that's just, I learned a lot, you know, I've never been a part of a municipal project of this nature, they're very expensive, you know, it was eye-opening for me, I I was amazed that. The first, just the, not a money per pair, per square feet, I was just blown away by, but that is, that's the reality of the situation. You know, so, but that being said, I mean, I don't think there's anything we can really get done today. I think that there's a good discussion, and we, we need to add some structure to this going forward, so that's something we'll have to discuss and put on a future gen item. That the warrant is what it is right now, um I think this is gonna be hashed out and probably leave us some confusion during the town meeting. I think that's a reality of the situation, unfortunately.
Oh, I could get Mike's opinion on changing the number at the town meeting.
What's that?
Mike, if we have a number for the project that's under warrant.
Yep.
And can that be changed at the town meeting?
So, the article that's on the town meeting warrant right now is five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. For site evaluation, engineering and design services, and project management services for design, bidding, and construction. Including, but not limited to schematic design, construction documents, bidding, and construction oversight of addition and renovation. And incidental costs related thereto. This article is designed to fund the administrative part of doing this, it's not designed to actually build anything.
It's right there, and construction, you said that, that's not.
Services for design bidding and construction, it's project management services, it's not the construction itself.
Okay.
So, the way that this article is worded, even if you added more money to it, that more money could not be used for construction. Because that's outside the scope of this article, it could only be used to oversee the construction. You could do a construction, you could do an amount of construction with a five fifty that was appropriated last year, because that was for an additional renovation. You could use last year's five fifty to actually do work, and this current five fifty to oversee the work. But you could not add construction money to this article that's on now, because this article doesn't call for actual construction work.
So then the timeline would have to be something like this, we vote this in at this meeting, and then whatever numbers we come up with through the process. Will then be voted on at the annual town meeting.
The annual town meeting, or if you chose to have another town meeting between that and then.
Okay.
There's, there's nothing that stops you, assuming you were paying for it out of free cash and not out of an appropriation that required tax revenue.
Right.
There would be nothing that would stop you from having another town meeting sometime in the next eight months. Uh so if you've got a firm number in January, and you wish to have a town meeting in February, you could, you could do that.
Okay.
But um.
And then we could like, I'm assuming we, we don't use all of the, say we have a little over a million now towards what has been allocated for. If we don't need all of that for that, we can vote to transfer that towards the construction cost?
Yes. So.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, so if you, assuming this article passes in a few weeks. Some preliminary work could be started, you know, sooner, using the money that was appropriated last year. But you would not, you're a little too hamstrung right now in that you couldn't go to town meeting and add another five hundred thousand to this. And and go start doing work, if you change a number a little bit, that's one thing, if you change wording a little bit, that's one thing, when you try to change too much all at once. Then you fail to give proper notice to the residents of what you're actually trying to do.
Uh, I have one more question for you guys. I've heard a lot of objections to the project in general because we want a bigger project, maybe with the library, maybe with the town hall or whatever. Is, is that a fact, or am I hallucinating on that? Would, do you support just a COA project?
I, the, the last time that we were here, that's what we said we were gonna go forward with, was just renovations and upgrades, all the necessary infrastructure of that building and whatever extra room that they needed, that was the plan we were gonna go with. The six seventy-two is not gonna get the COA what they need on the inside of the walls and on the outside. Um, everything that that warrant article is, you need all of that before you can even go to construction fees, so that warrant article is gonna get you where you need to be. That's why that warrant article is very important.
Well, my question really was, because both of you are on the building committee, do you support this?
At that meeting that we had, I think I was the one that made the motion to go with option two.
Yeah.
Okay, because the discussion of a joint library senior center was off the table. But I agree, I, I think we should do the senior center the right way with option two, okay? But at some point, the town is gonna have to do something about our library.
I'm done.
There's no doubt about it. That's it.
Yeah, I agree.
You know what I mean?
I, I mean, what I, the way I think that, so this, right now, this is a COA, say we get this building up to, up, you know, it's updated, it's compliant, it's a great, just, it's a, now it's just a nice town building, right? Down the road, we could, it'd be great if we could do a new town hall slash COA slash library, it's all brand new in the middle of town, you know, and then that, now we have all this excess, this current COA now can be, you know, great, you know, spaces for all kinds of different departments. You know, it's not like it's very, a very specific, you know, we're building it for a specific that use, it's, it can be transferable to other departments, so I think it's just the more updated buildings we have in town, the better it is for the town, you know, so.
I think we're all on the same path right now, I could just, I think it has to be, if you go into town meeting and it's confusing, it's not gonna pass.
Yeah, I, I agree, and we'll have to work out those details.
That's a key, please, if we're on the same page going into the town meeting.
Just one last question?
Yep.
For the town meeting, we, we do have, we have solicited, I shouldn't say solicited, but we did publish in our flyer, option two of the proposed addition.
Yeah.
Is that something that we can do and know what to do, right? Put, put a flyer at the town meeting, a handout, that we can do the same, the same, uh, one that we sent out to the, to the population, senior population? We have that available at town meeting so that the, the taxpayers?
I'm gonna defer to Michael Q on the, on the rules here.
Um, I would say generally yes, because this will be informing people what this administrative money is hoping to accomplish. The administrative money is hoping to accomplish the oversight and, and planning and whatnot of this particular option. What, what people have to stay away from during the town meeting is debating the option itself.
Okay.
Because of the way this article is written, this is not a forum for somebody to get up and say, the heck with this, I wanna build a whole new council and agent.
Yeah, or, or we don't need an elevator, we, we need, we need this, we wanna paint it blue, like, those things shouldn't be discussed, right? It should just be whether we're funny or not funny.
Yeah, we're, we're basically.
That should save a lot of time, I think.
Yeah, we're, we're agreeing in general that we want to go out to dinner, we're not picking the restaurant or what we want to eat.
Fair, great, I know, I think.
So is that, is that a guess we can do that?
Yes. Thank you.
Could it not be a bad idea to notify him? Because you wanna make sure that you say we can ask him for support of any kind from the, from the top, taxpayers. Yeah.
But I mean, I wanna do it just.
As long as you have factual information.
There'll be just the, just the design of the building.
If only the council and agent had a former moderator, we'd.
You want, you need it a week in advance, right?
He would support.
Generally, I like it a week in advance, but Bruce was the moderator before me, so he's, I mean, he knows what to stick with.
I, I, I personally myself think that, um, now, right now is the time. We, we need, we need a new town hall. We have a beautiful police station here, and, and it's fortunate that we, we're able to use this for meetings and things like that. We need a library, we need a senior center, we need a senior center before the library, yes, I, I would be on that, but we need all, all these three things, and we have to start somewhere. Someone has to stop this all.
Yep.
Going.
That's the charge several years ago was, because everybody kept asking, what do you do, you know, where's the plan, and that's why we initiated the building committee, so we took a look at all the buildings, so the building committee does have a plan.
A master plan, yeah.
It just said this was a little, this went a little sideways, and now I feel like we're all back on the same page going forward.
Okay, yeah, I agree. All right, thank you, everybody, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Moving on. All right, so this is, um, so I have to make an announcement? Well, I guess, should I, should I talk about this first before I make my announcements?
Yeah.
All right. Mike, this is on the parcel of land, um, located in the Free Town State Forest, the, the conserva, oh, is it DPW?
No, this is the state, this is the Department of Conservation and Recreation.
State, sorry. Yeah, DCR.
Yes.
I always get my acronyms messed up.
Awesome.
Uh, that they're gonna take ownership of, and you want to just speak a little bit to this?
Um, sure. Um, the DCR a few years ago purchased somewhere in the neighborhood of a thousand acres, it was several hundred to a thousand acres, uh, north of Chase Road. There was a, sort of a single landowner who owned quite a bit of land, uh, was not land in most cases that was suitable for development. So the DCR purchased that, and when they did that, it left a number of almost like donut holes, because they bought all that that one person had and, and, or one group had, and then had scattered little bits left over. They have started chasing down some of the scattered little bits.
And these are not like, um, they're not connected any roads, I'm assuming, right? They're kind of just nowhere.
No, so the one that you have in front of you, it's about twenty acres, but it's, it's landlocked.
Landlocked, yeah.
And that's what most of these that they are, are buying up now are, is they're landlocked in some fashion.
All right. So I think the next step here is I have to make a, a, uh, announcement, is that correct? So this is a statement I'll read aloud, there's no vote to be needed on this, is there?
No, just for whatever reason, when they're gonna, I think it's because the town currently collects some form of property tax on it, and once they acquire it, we won't, I think you're just giving a general notice that this land is going to become exempt.
Okay, and then, once I make that, you know, have you reach out to them, and, okay, so, Commonwealth Massachusetts, acting through its Department of Conservation and Recreation, DCR has under consideration the acquisition of, of the fee or lesser interest in approximately twenty acres of forest land that lies continuous to Free Town Fall River State Forest in the town of Free Town. The current owner's use of the property is undeveloped forest land, if acquired by the state, the property will become part of the abutting Free Town Fall River State Forest, and DCR will retain the property as undeveloped open space woodland for natural resource protection, passive recreation, and other conservation and recreational purposes. And, um, Luann, another call. Um, yeah, can you please, uh, make them aware that be, be this announcement?
Yep, I will do that.
All right.
That's Debbie's phone, not mine.
Oh, Debbie, you're getting a phone call, should I just deny it?
Yeah, you can.
Okay. So that was easy. So next is discussion and vote, how many Zoom accounts the town needs. So it looks like we currently have ten, and the proposed new list is five. Um, is Debbie or Luann any kind of comment on this, or where do you, how much does it cost per Zoom account?
Nineteen ninety-nine a month.
Nineteen ninety-nine a month.
And it's currently being funded by the CARES Act.
Yep.
And that money is, um, being extinguished, uh, as of the end of October, so that's part of this, is that, you know, um, going forward, it won't be coming out of the CARES Act, it'll be coming out of just our regular operating budgets, so.
I think it's, I'm fine with going to five, I think you just need to have, like, one of those dedicated, if another department does need that, that, that they can reach out.
Yeah, that's one that's shared.
And I want that to be communicated, so there's no, like, so, like, everyone knows, all right, you don't need, you, you don't need your own, but it'll be there if you need it, just let us know.
Is that for simultaneous use, is that?
Yeah, I guess, like, I mean, if we, I can't imagine the town ever needing more than five Zoom accounts going at once.
I'm trying to understand, if we have one account, we can only use one account, right?
No, we'll have five, so we have ten.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just.
Yeah, okay.
Just so, so, I mean, if one account was being used by ten different people, that's okay as long as it's not simultaneously, is that correct?
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so the question really is, how many accounts would we need to be used simultaneously?
Exactly. Five is a number, I mean, five might even be more than we need, but I think we go to five and then see how that goes, as things, you know, as we get out of this pandemic, they'll probably need it less and less, and we'll probably go down to one or two.
If the, if the department chooses to wanna use Zoom, they could still buy it and put it in their own operating budget as well, so I think it's just a matter of transitioning off of this CARES Act money.
Yeah.
Moving forward, they certainly can put it in as an office expense and, and have Zoom if that's something that's vital to their department.
So how many do we need?
We have ten, we're gonna go to five, is a proposed, is a suggestion from Luann, or this memo.
Okay.
Okay, so with that, um, I'll extend a motion to move forward with the recommendation of Luann to go from the ten current users to the five proposed new user list.
Motion made. Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Brunwell?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. Jared, I almost forgot you, up down there, Jared.
I know.
All right, okay. Moving on. Discussion and vote, um, on procedure to book and any fees to utilize the bandstand at Hathaway Park. So it looks like we have, we've had some people utilizing Hathaway Park and kind of discussion whether we want, how that to, formality around that.
So I've hardly ever seen, and have only seen one group use that in the last six months, how often does this really happen?
I guess it's someone, a musical group practicing on Saturday evenings, but we've got, um, a couple of other people that have now reached out and wanted to do, like, um, craft fair or a vendor fair there, so we were like, well, is this allowed? How do you wanna go about it? Do they need insurance, you know, all those kind of things, so.
We get calls through the Chatham Parks Office constantly to, to utilize the bandstand for weddings.
Really?
Yes.
Yeah.
People are downsizing weddings.
And what do we say?
Uh, to refer to the Board of Selectmen's Office because they have the appointing authority and they have the branding authority, and in the past, it's, um, been politely refused just because of these, um, status.
Yeah, if it's kind of dangerous right now.
The status of that structure.
Once that's cleaned up, though, that might be great to be able to do that.
You go back in time a little bit, I think you know somebody that used to use that for weddings, that probably.
Yeah.
Could give you something.
Yeah, according to him, my grandfather, he thinks he built the bandstand. Sticks to his story.
It is, it is, it's, you know, it is a beautiful, um, attraction, many towns use the bandstand, it's kind of sad to see it not be used, but as long as it's done in a safe manner, and, um, it's nice to, to see things being utilized.
Yeah, like, I, if, if people wanna go play music up there, I don't wanna have the, like, a formality of that they're requested, I mean, I see what you're saying, though, it's gonna become a problem if people are trying to, how, can we make a, it's first come, first served?
Where it's like, you know, if like two groups plan to go there Saturday night, and then they're just there, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if we really.
I don't know how you wanna do it.
First come, first served?
Yeah, I don't know if it really requires us, uh, like, 'cause I don't wanna make this like a formal thing right now, like, once it's all finished and nice and redone, which we have money allocated to do that, like, and that, maybe that's a different story, I don't know.
So the vendor fair.
What's that?
What about the liability?
Yeah, that's, that's, so we just, but, like, we have this there, we want people to be able to use it. I understand the situation, like, right, we'd have to have, say, a couple people wanna go up there and play guitar, like, we didn't require some insurance, proof of insurance for that, right, that's kind of.
Does the town have liability insurance for all its buildings, and, or is that included?
I don't know.
If you do have an umbrella or a policy, we could check to see what exactly, if it would cover that, I can check into that.
I mean, I, I personally would hate to make a big deal out of this, it's been working fine for a hundred years.
That's what I'm trying to say, but I feel like there is some liability here.
I mean, maybe if they're gonna have more than a certain number of people, then you would want them to ask permission just because you wanna notify police and fire that there's gonna be fifty people at the bandstand.
Yeah, that's a different, that's a different story, right?
But if somebody wants to just go play guitar, I mean, they're public, they're public parks, right, they're open to the public.
We don't ask people to book Hathaway Park.
Right, like, you can, you wanna go use the swing set, you go use the swing set at Hathaway Park, that's what it's there for. So I, I think there's probably a line that probably, eventually will need to be drawn, especially when the bandstand is, um, completed, you, you don't wanna invite liability right now. But, um, so I think for a wedding per se, you might want them to just come and ask for permission, get a one day permit or something, so that you have the not, the information to pass along to the police and fire. You don't want them to block four corners and there's a fire somewhere and the police can't get through.
Absolutely, so.
And time constraints as well, too, 'cause don't forget, you, you know, if you assign them a one day permit, doesn't mean that they can utilize that fully for ten hours until it gets stuck, and don't forget you have that open railing with the caution tape that I personally put up, you know?
Yeah.
Where you're gonna, it's, it's an open gate and open fence, and with little children, that was my, my number one concern.
Yeah.
You don't want, you know, and if you're having some type of a reception or something there, I think there needs to be regulations and stipulations and timelines and.
Yep.
Yeah, and I think that will come, right, we'll have to think about it a little more, I think that definitely, I agree, especially once it's, you're done, I don't know, do we have to take action on this thing right now?
I mean, to me, is it any different than Hathaway Park, or we don't?
We just had a couple of people, like, one wanted to run a vendor fair there, and the other one wanted to do a craft fair, and they said they're gonna send a formal request for it, haven't seen it, so if it comes in, then we can address it.
Okay, yeah. All right, yeah, exactly, that's, but good thing, thing, thinking forward, I think we definitely, we'll have to address these issues, I don't know if we're ready to do that tonight, though.
I think that's typically, I mean, we haven't had it for a couple of years, but I think that's typically what happens with the Strawberry Festival, I think the Tuesday Club sends a letter, we wanna have the Strawberry Festival. Selectmen vote to do that, because that's gonna be something that draws a lot of people, as opposed to just kids hanging around playing flute or what have you.
According to me, it's a ten dollar, they pay the ten dollar fee.
That's our fee, yeah.
And they'll provide a certificate of insurance, so.
And where do you, where do you draw the line is the question.
Yeah.
If it's a public event, like what you're talking about, absolutely, if it's a few people wanting to sit there and sing and play guitar, that's something else, right?
Go for it. I don't, you know, all right, great. All right, moving on, so, um, discussion of vote on the Living Grace Family Chiropractic Quest to host a five K on ten, ten. So police and fire, okay with this?
Yep.
All right.
Signed off.
Already signed off? All right, perfect, yep. Do you have a, do you have a second? Jared?
Yes, sorry, I was hitting the wrong button.
All right, um, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Brunwell?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes, all right, discussion of vote on agreement between the town of Free Town and Tascow Construction, Inc., for the South Main Street Sidewalk Reconstruction Project, and the.
How did you miss, number seventeen?
Maybe I don't, no, that was the one I just did, seventeen, we're good.
Okay.
All right, eighteen is the reconstruction project, so does, nothing crazy to me. Um, I'm sure Chuck has approved this?
Yes.
All right, so I'm extending a motion to approve?
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Brunwell?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. Okay, now we get back to Mike on this interesting one. So this is the discussion vote on the Land in Lakeville, Free Town, Land in Lakeville, Free Town is receiving property tax bill on, this one kind of breaks my brain a little bit, but.
Yeah, it does, um, this conversation originated because the tax bill from Lakeville showed up, and when I realized there was nobody left to. And when I realized there was nobody left who knew the story behind it, I wrote, don't pay this on the envelope and put it back in the mailbox. Um, make a long story short, there was about twenty years ago a subdivision that was done behind Abonacook. That is, um, partially in Lakeville and partially in East Free Town. At the end of that subdivision or at the end of that planning process, there was about a hundred and, uh, fifty or so acres that was left over. It was swampy land for the most part, it was not useful to the developer. Basically, there was some sort of agreement that that land was going to be given to the conservation commissions in the two towns. The part that was in Lakeville would go to them, the part that was here would come to us. Uh, the way that the deed was written, our town somehow ended up with all of the land. And Lakeville began taxing us on it because we are not exempt from paying property taxes in Lakeville.
We own it, but it's still in Lakeville.
It's in Lakeville. Um, so I have here, this is actually a letter, the Free Town and Lakeville assessors were discussing this at the time. Uh, Lakeville's assessors, this is dated September thirtieth, two thousand and four. Uh, indicated that they were trying to get the developer's attorney to correct this by writing new deeds. That apparently never happened, uh, and that if they did not. Bring forward new deeds, that Lakeville would simply take this through tax title, that we should not pay the bill, and Lakeville would take it from us.
Mike, question for you.
Yeah.
Do we bill the state of Massachusetts for the forest that they own now in Free Town?
We cannot bill the state, but they have to pay us a form of pilot. Um, it's not the most advantageous pilot because they tell us how much they're gonna pay and we just say, thank you, we don't get some.
But I, I guess, a different example, like, I know New Bedford owns some property in Free Town, they pay property tax on that one soon, right?
Uh, New Bedford's water department also pays a form of pilot because they're exempt, but Fall River's water department pays us a full tax bill. Uh, the Fall River Redevelopment Authority pays us property tax on the land they have on Innovation Way.
Okay.
So, so that's kinda where this is. Um. Lake, uh, Lakeville and Free Town both have different assessors and different assessor staff than there was seventeen years ago. I don't know if they're trying to be polite or whatever the case may be, they, they put this in tax title, but they've never actually taken it from us.
We want them, the goal here, we want them to take it from us.
Yes, we want either for them to take it from us or for our town council to tell us how to just give them the part that, because we. I don't wanna say we don't want it because it's conservation land, but it's not in our town. They want it, we, they want it more than we want it.
Yeah.
And we want them to have it more than we want it.
Yeah.
Um, but, but that's where this came from, this was just, you're getting a tax bill and you needed to know why you're not paying the tax bill.
So I saw your recommendation, right?
Yes, uh, there is, when land is given to a conservation commission, uh, the conservation commission is supposed to vote to accept it. The selectmen are supposed to vote to approve that. That never happened here, I imagine because the deed was written incorrectly. Um, Lakeville's assessors in their two thousand and four letter kind of alluded to that because they say if we. Vote to accept it, we should specifically exclude the land that's in Lakeville and make sure that we don't accept that. Uh, so you could take that step, um. You could have both the conservation commission and the selectmen here vote to accept and approve the land that's here and put that on record. It, it kinda doesn't solve the fact that there is a deed on record that says that land is being given to this town that's in another town that. We don't want and we shouldn't have. So that part still has to get dealt with in some fashion. Uh, if Lakeville's not gonna foreclose on it, then we need to find out how to just give it to them somehow.
Okay, and so, um, we have, have we reached out to council on this yet? So I, so I guess that's kinda the first step is to reach out to council.
Right, we, we wanna be careful, in the end, we don't want to somehow lose the part that we have because we did want that.
Yeah.
Wasn't always supposed to come to us. Uh, we just need to figure out how to straighten out the Lakeville part.
Okay, so I guess, is there any vote really needed today to, to, to just, or kinda, we have consensus that we wanna. Have our lawyers look at it, right?
It's probably the best first step.
Yeah. All right, and we'll get back to this. Any, any questions Debbie on this one?
No, I'm, I'm just, and you know, we'll, we'll talk to town council and make sure we don't trigger procurement on this, cause that, that would just not be fun.
It's a weird one.
It is, um, yeah.
We're sure, yeah, all right, okay, so I think that's all, ready for that?
Yeah, more or less, yeah.
And we'll, hopefully we'll have, you know, once we get that here back from the attorneys, we'll reach out to you, Mike, and maybe have you just talk to them directly, you could probably explain the situation best, so.
Oh yeah, and I think it's helpful unless something has changed, we have the same attorneys that Lakeville has.
Okay, there you go. And that, that might be the next step too, is, and maybe invite, you know, someone from Lakeville representative to kinda talk to them, put this, put this on their radar. So, okay, and the next is also Mike, right, or I think, cause actually, no, Cheryl, maybe both of you, uh, discussion on the representative town meeting.
Oh, yeah, when we were here, yeah, was that a month or so ago, um, you guys had asked for some more information about that.
Yeah.
Uh, I'll give you just a very brief synopsis, so at the representative town meeting, right, we have open town meeting right now. Uh, which means any registered voter can come to, uh, town meeting and vote. Uh, towns that have a population over six thousand are allowed to adopt what's called representative town meeting, which is almost like having a mini conference. You get to, or a city council, you get to vote for representatives by precinct to come and vote for you, and not all registered voters are. Able to attend. Um, George had asked at the time, I think, what the pros and cons of that were. The pro is you have a fixed number of people who you know is your maximum for coming. So you don't have some of the problems we've had in the past with trying to find a venue because. There's no possibility you're gonna have a thousand voters show up or seven hundred or whatever. You're fixed to the number that's typically three hundred or fewer. Um, the con and the major con is that it excludes a lot of people from coming to vote. So when you have an issue and the trash contract last spring was probably a perfect example of that. If you had two hundred and fifty representatives, then all the other people who have very strong opinions on the trash contract. Would not have been allowed to kind of express those opinions. That, that's kinda the major drawback to it. Uh, of the towns that have representative town meeting, uh, this is going by the, the. Twenty twenty census numbers that we have now, uh, our population is nine thousand two hundred and six. There would only be three towns in the state with a lower population that, uh, had it than us. That had representative town meeting, three towns with a lower population. Uh, the overwhelming majority would be higher, the next smallest one after us would have, uh, eleven thousand four hundred people.
Over.
Uh. Could you name some of those towns, please?
I sure could. So the smallest town to have representative town meeting is Lee. And Lee, uh, their twenty twenty census population is fifty seven hundred, five thousand seven hundred eighty eight. My understanding is they adopted representative town meeting when they had more than six thousand people and they now have fewer, but once you have it, they don't take it away from you.
Interesting.
Uh, Adams and Montague are the other two that would be smaller than us. Uh, just to shoot on something local, Fairhaven and Dartmouth have representative town meeting. There's no other town in Bristol County that has it.
Has they even approved that? I know it was on the, um, in the works, but they haven't approved it yet.
Very well, it is having it.
Okay.
So, um, Plymouth is the only town in Plymouth County that has it.
Which is a very large town.
Yeah, wow, sixty one thousand people, that's, I didn't know Plymouth's that big.
Yeah, Plymouth is a, a pretty good size. Uh, Middleborough has a substantially high population, higher population than we do, they do not have representative town.
Yeah.
Uh, Plymouth's sixty one thousand two seventeen, they're the second largest town in the state to have it. Um. Falmouth, I believe, as I look at this, Falmouth appears to be the only town in Barnstable County that has it. So Falmouth, Fairhaven, Dartmouth and Plymouth would be the only towns anywhere even near us that do have it. Um. If, if you want my personal opinion, we're, we're too small.
Yeah.
And our electorate here is not always the most engaged, but when there's a hot button issue, they, they do come out. And I think it would be a disservice to send half of them away because. They're not a town meeting member, um, cause I'm sure there are people that come now because they're angry about trash or they're angry about something else. And they realize it's a good place to be and then they come back again.
Yeah.
Um. So everything being taken away from all of us, that's one thing that would be very concerning to me. Again, it's taking people's ability to vote in this town. I think people, it's a very old town, we like the democratic way, we wanna hear our voice, and it's not always guaranteed. You know, you might have representative town meeting, but depending on the issues, are you gonna have that representative with full force that's gonna attend those meetings? And get the consensus voice heard. Um, that's always an issue. Uh, again, going to elections, elect, they would have to be elected. The first go around, you'd have a certain amount for X amount of years and then. Um, you know, the next year, the next year, again, don't forget also every ten years, adjusted presentation, two weeks though in regards to review meeting.
Mm-hmm.
If that was to happen again at this town, that's shifting all of that all over again.
Yeah, seems like a, seems like a lot.
I did, I did, I think forward to the, what's the name, the survey that I did, the pros and cons.
I, I read that, that was good, yeah.
Just as a point of information.
Yeah.
Um, for the surrounding towns.
Appreciate that.
If, if we were a higher population and, you know, in ten years, this may be a conversation that we're needing to have again because. Uh, the train may bring people, uh, there are gonna be over fifty five apartments that are in the works. Our population may be a lot higher and newer.
Mm-hmm.
That it's maybe a lot of people who don't really know anything about town or not that invested in the town that are not ever gonna come out. We have some degree of apathy now, but, um, for the most part, we're still getting relatively informed people that are coming. We just need to figure out how to get more people to come.
Yeah.
I think what we're doing, we, we started doing this year, is to publicize the meetings more with our flyers.
Right.
So hopefully that'll work. And having said that, I agree with both of you, and have many discussions about this. And, uh, having said that, I think I'd like to make a motion to kill this particular point.
I mean, I mean, uh, it's not, we don't have on the agenda to vote on, but I, but, yeah, so I, we just, we'll just stop talking about it.
Okay, I thought it was because it was on the agenda.
No, I don't.
The issues that we're having in Free Town, it's not only a Free Town issue, cities and towns across the state are facing the same issues. How do you get voter engagement, voter turnout? And again, it's, it all leads back to one thing, it's gonna be what's pressing. What is concerning me as a citizen, as a voter, that is gonna draw me to the.
So we get one real hot. We have one hot button, button issue on every town meeting, to get people to show up.
Every, every town meeting needs to have a COA, a water liner, a new school on it, and then people.
Either that or free food and free babysitting services.
Yeah, there you go, there you go. All right, well, thank you, I appreciate that, that was a good discussion, and, um, all right, so we'll move on. So this is discussion on backup COVID nineteen plans for hosting the special town meeting and the event that COVID nineteen protocols require modification. And this is also Board of Health, sorry Jared.
Yeah, it's fine, Trevor, you, this, you don't hurt my feelings.
All right.
If you won't continue on, it's probably easier to have you do it.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I, I'm not really sure, so.
I don't have any, I don't have any backup information on this, this is literally what was posted.
Okay, all right, well, well, we have Lori here, so, could you, uh, might explain, like, expanding on this a little bit?
So I was gonna just, um, give you the, I was obviously here last Monday, kinda give you the numbers of where we are.
Yeah.
This Monday, so that way we can kind of, we can kinda see what we wanna do for the meeting. So, as far as, um, case counts, it is up, um, Free Town's up one of three cases from last Monday, from last week.
Wow.
Uh, for the month of September, we ended up having a total of eighty eight cases for Free Town, for so far for the month of October. They did run all the, I told you they'd run the variants, um, on some of the specimens, and that report was in for September. And of the eighty eight, twenty six of them were the Delta variant, so, um, quite a large number.
I have a question, if you, if you had COVID hypothetically, could you figure out whether you had the Delta or not? Is there a way to look that up, or is that just kinda part of it?
So they, it's called sequencing.
Yeah.
And they, they kinda randomly pick which ones they're gonna sequence.
Gotcha.
So now all of the specimens are sent, so of the ones that were sent for September, twenty six of them were sent, and twenty six of them came back Delta, so.
Okay.
Probably had like this one that all.
All more Delta.
Pretty much Delta variant.
Gotcha.
Which is that they all don't get sent. It depends on the lab, um, which ones they're gonna do themselves in the lab, and then which ones also get sent to the state.
Okay, interesting, thank you, sorry.
And as far as, um, the percent positivity, so basically of the tests that are done, how many come back positive? Last week we were at, um, four point three eight percent, and when the state came up with the numbers this past Thursday, we're at four point nine five. So we are at a slight, also increase in that.
Okay.
So as far as, um, and there's currently twenty two active cases, um, that are found here at the moment. So as far as the meeting, obviously, the board, you guys decide. I think the board could consider, um, mask wear, you know, that's up to you as far as, um, at the annual meeting.
I think that makes, I mean, people can't, we really can't be within, like, sixty apart.
Right, I'm not sure how many, you obviously don't know exactly how many people are gonna attend, um.
That's gonna be another, I'm, I'm sure, like, you're a, someone, you know, higher risk individual, you know? They probably wouldn't wanna go to the meeting, right? It's gonna drive a lot of people away, not showing up, it's unfortunate. If, but maybe if we can, we're gonna get pushed back either way, right? If we require masks, we're gonna get pushed back. If we don't require masks, then people aren't gonna show up that are high risk individuals, so this is an interesting topic.
One of the things that lots of guys have done is we've been able to write the COA, and some of the seniors that have come to the clinic. Because the COA is on the agenda for this meeting, that people who, the seniors don't normally come out to the meeting are coming because they wanna. So they don't normally drive at night, that's something, you know, that's why they don't attend some of the meetings. So they're, so they're talking about having the members bring them to the meeting so they can attend, so we may see an increase in. Only population because of what's on the agenda for the meeting.
Yeah.
Obviously, they're at high risk.
You have some. I think asking people to wear masks is the way to go in my opinion. Um, what you have to be careful of is if you have someone who just sternly, I am not gonna wear that mask. They cannot be stopped from voting.
That, that's what I was gonna say, I think we just, we'll ask people to wear masks, and that's be, that should be, please wear a mask.
Um, one thing.
You don't wear a mask, you don't wear a mask, but please, please wear a mask.
One thing that the state did recommend to us as moderators last year, um, we had this. Set up at last year's annual town meeting on the football field, that then they ended up needing to use it.
Mm-hmm.
If somebody will not, or maybe for some reason cannot wear a mask, you can try to have them sit in a particular part of the work. So you can say, this, uh, you know, this row or this corner or this section, uh, for the folks who are not gonna be wearing a mask. The rest of the room for the people who are.
Yeah.
Um. But I, I think as a Board of Health, like, I think you probably should recommend that folks wear masks where it's going to be enclosed, where you're gonna have. Some at-risk populations, um, we can try to recommend to people that families maybe leave gaps of chairs between them. It's gonna depend on how many people show up, how many seats we actually need.
Yeah. I mean, I think it's, there is a good idea to have the masked people, you know, the maskless people, their own section, I just don't know how that will. You know, go over, but I.
Wear the dunce cap though.
What's that?
Could that kinda like wear the dunce cap though?
Yeah.
It's like bringing all of these people to come to sit.
I know, I, 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 I mean, in practical terms, it makes sense.
Required.
Yeah, I mean, different towns have handled different, I know there was one town, um, and the name of it escapes me right now. But the moderator chose that if you were not wearing a mask, you could not be recognized to speak.
Hmm.
Um, I'm not going to do that.
No.
That's, that's a little too drastic.
Yeah.
Um, you know, th- there's no, town meetings have been exempt from pretty much every regulation or guidance that the state has come out.
Yeah.
They've not wanted to touch it, so we're all kinda, there's no, you can't look at another town for advice. But I, I think the advice you're getting right now for the masks is, is very good advice.
So now do we have to vote on this for this kinda protocol, or just at least?
Um. Well, I mean, the warrant's out, but I, as a Board of Health, you may want to, just as a policy, take a vote that you strongly encourage the wearing of masks.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, I'll, I'll entertain a motion that we, um, strongly encourage.
Laurie's got better wording than I.
Yeah, yeah, we strongly encourage, uh, attendance to the town meeting to wear a mask.
Second motion.
I'll, I'll make the motion.
Second, all right. Second, alright. All, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Grunwald?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
The only other advice I would give you too is to keep in contact with Lakeville because the meeting is in Lakeville.
Yeah.
If their Board of Health comes out with some sort of, like, an indoor mask mandate,
That'd be great.
Well. We we may at that point have to move to a venue back in our own town because if Lakeville's gonna require it, oh, we can't require it.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Create a conflict.
Yeah.
Uh, so just be aware of what Lakeville's doing in the interim.
Debbie, can you talk to them if you have to?
Yeah, I did reach out to Ed, who is the health agent in Lakeville today, um, regarding that, so we were bringing that up today, and he said they have a policy to wear masks in town building. It's not a requirement. Um, and he did say that they have signs on their town buildings, but the schools have their own mask requirements.
Hmm.
And schools for this purpose have left it up to us.
Okay. Alright, so I think we're recovered. Alright.
So I just have to sign a G O N masks available for anyone who wants them.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
So would you like that posted on Facebook and the website? To just that masks are strongly encouraged, so we can try to get the word out?
Yeah.
And we're, we do have it set to go on the town.
It's gonna be a lot of angry Facebook posts, but.
Yeah. Well, we do have it set that town meetings going on the signs around town, so if there's room, they could just say.
Yeah, please wear a mask.
Please wear a mask.
Did we roll call that, that one?
Nah, well, I'm, I was just posting it. Maybe that's the policy.
No, no.
Oh, did we roll call, we roll call on the policy? I think we did.
Didn't I? Yes.
Yeah.
I think we did. Yeah, we're just gonna use that as well.
Alright, so I think we'll move on from that. We good?
Yep.
I think we are. So now our last agenda item, because we already took care of agenda item twenty-two, is the discussion on transfer station hours.
Yeah, so, um, I've had a couple of, uh, concerned residents recently reach out to me at the fact that they've been unable to go to the transfer station on Sundays. Um, and, you know, we, I talked to them briefly about, you know, us looking at the hours as a whole and whether that means us opening up one night or doing anything on Sundays for certain times of the season, uh, you know, where the fall might be a bigger deal, when leaves are falling, whatever, spring cleanups. But, um, I'm not this open to that. I would rather be consistent year round. So, um, is there any residents there currently that want to speak on this?
Yeah, yeah. Please, in our name, you can speak.
Uh, how you change community circles?
Yeah.
I do have concern with that as well. Um, we've been into that transfer station for like eighteen years and it's just been taken away without hours of of work. We can't get there during these hours. They close at three thirty during the week. They close on Sundays. We work on Saturdays. Yes, Sunday, Mondays off. It's, there's no way we can get there. We only use it for our brush and our leads and our pine needles. So, I mean, we're there spring and fall using it.
Mm-hmm.
Where am I gonna do it? I don't have a backyard with woods to put it in. I have no place to put it.
Yeah.
I'm really concerned. I talked to Jared a few times as well, and and that's what I told him. That's my concern. Where am I gonna put my stuff?
Yep, no, I hear you. I I think this change was made kind of at the request of the transfer station employees themselves at one point.
Yeah, well, it's never passed for us. Did we vote on that?
Yes.
I think we, yeah, we did. This was something that our, the previous town administrator kind of started this conversation.
So was it, was it, was there a meeting on this with the community or?
There was, it was, there was discussed. It was on the agenda item and it was discussed and then voted on. Um, now, if my memory serves me, there's been a lot of agenda items since then, but, um, I think it's something that maybe we could have a public hearing on and and we can invite people in to come and and speak on, you know, what 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 they feel. I think, you know, your concerns are totally valid. Um, I get it. I, when we made this decision, it was, you know, what we were told is that, you know, these are the days that people don't come the most, right? Which, that could be their, they also may have just wanted Sundays off. So, you know, like, there's, there's.
So.
Yep.
So how did this get changed as far as that and why? Why were the hours changed?
It was, there were change.
What were, what was the, again, is there minutes on this meeting? So I can look it up or? Minutes are always posted on, um, the, uh, town website. That's our, our hosting place. Yeah. I'd have to get the actual meeting that it was voted on. Yeah. And we can certainly supply that to you. Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Um, so, yeah, like, I don't understand. Like, why was it changed? Didn't we hire more people?
There's currently, what, do we have, I think, two, there's two employees.
Two, no, it's, it's been a change.
Two and a half, correct?
Yeah.
There's been a change, but it's basically two people that run it.
But I thought, I thought they were, like, Vicky was there first and then there was lack of help. So didn't they hire more help?
No, it's always, with always at least two people.
There was always two.
Yeah.
Too good.
Yeah, that was, if I remember correctly, it was approached to us, um, that part of the issue was a lack of help. And then based on that, we looked at the hours that when, you know, to Trevor's point, when the least amount of stuff was being taken in and Sunday was one of those days. So that's helpful approach was.
On the Sunday, so people don't use it on Sunday, you know, Sunday?
There's no proof of that. That, this was, this was the, what we were told by the folks that worked there.
You know, I feel like that feedback, the same.
Yeah.
People objecting to it. I mean, I'd be hop- hoping to put this to a vote to see what we want.
Yeah, I I think that's a good idea.
I think it's, Chase is correct, though. Because Vicky was there for a certain amount of time by herself. I believe it was, um, a situation where some employees, it it was just her for, for. Yeah. And then with the new fiscal year, then they had the full-time Tom Asher came from the department that came over to transfer. And I do believe you have some per diem staff that do work there.
Yeah.
In regards to brush and if you wanna look at numbers and why the hours were changed, proof is in the numbers, correct? But if you're having folks, and my husband is in the same situation, I can attest for him, he has Sunday, Mondays off. We do yard, we do stop. Fall stop on Saturdays, Saturday afternoons, we're cleaning up, loading up the truck, delivering it on Sunday. You don't necessarily get charged for brush, so the number's not gonna be there.
No, that's fair. And and I remember when we had this initial discussion, we kind of said, alright, this was, this was what they were asking for. We didn't, you know, it was on the agenda item. I don't, I don't think there's any kind of big discussion about it. I said, we'll see how it works. If it doesn't, if it doesn't work, then, um, we have no problem changing it back to the way it was or or some different form of hours, you know?
Just to help, just that during spring and fall cleanup, especially, like, just to bring our brush there.
No, I think that makes total sense.
Can we do a little survey?
Well, I think if we, if we have a public hearing, right, if people come to talk about it, then we can make, then we can vote on after that. Does that make sense?
To be aware of the public hearing, how, how is that put up?
It'll be posted.
Posted. So meetings are always posted at least, uh, forty-eight hours. Yeah. Forty-seven meetings and they're posted.
Yeah.
Public meetings.
Public hearings, that X Mondays and the trains will be posted. But they have the free town flash, which is reverse nine-one-one.
Oh, they do that on that?
That's where they vote for something else. That's a bit of their purview, but that could be requested.
That aren't that hard to request that.
Yeah, I I just don't know the way to possibly do that.
Do you request that, that go out on a free town flash without meeting?
We could definitely do that, right?
That people are really aware.
I like the idea of a public hearing.
Cause I do think, um, I'm sorry.
Hold on one second.
I'm sorry.
No, Jared, you're good. Please.
Alright, yeah, so I like the idea of a public hearing where people can come in and voice their opinion rather than, um, doing it on Facebook or some, cause then they'll say, well, I never saw it and I didn't get this, I didn't get that. And there's gonna be some truth to that, right? Not everyone is technologically savvy.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, I, I just want, you know, to George's point, you you might not get a lot of people, but I do wanna make sure that we give everyone that fair chance to speak, so.
Yeah, this is one of those items that really impacts, like, actual, you know, people on a day-to-day basis. So I think that I'd be okay with setting off free town flash, letting people know we're having a discussion about potentially changing the hours. I think we'd like to get Vicky and, you know, make them very aware, so they have an opportunity to to state their case and maybe, maybe their views have changed on this too. Maybe they want different hours, right? I'm sure they don't wanna get yelled at all the time about, you know, so.
And I get that, but.
I would publicize this in every way we could.
Yeah.
It doesn't have to be just Facebook or a, or an open re, or a meeting. Could be bolt and maybe something else.
Yeah, but we're saying free town flash, we call.
Oh, yeah, I think any way you can get it out is great. I'm just saying as far as how we go about it, when we make the decision based on people's comments, I don't want it to be based on us doing an online survey and then coming back and saying, eight people wanna change the date. So we make that decision based on that. I want the live stuff, but whatever we need to do to get the idea out to people that we're gonna talk about this and vote on it on this date, absolutely.
Yeah, and we can get that done soon. Yeah, there's no, yeah. Yeah.
And in fact, it doesn't change. What do we do?
Yeah.
That's gonna be my biggest, what do I do?
Dump it in front of the gig.
I know, I know. I think that, that's why I called Jared too mu- uh, news I heard about.
Yeah, I can't, I honestly, I don't, like, you know, there's no hours is gonna work for every single person, right? I'm sure.
And I get that, I get that.
So we're doing the best we can with the, the, the development staff.
Fortunately, it's like you took the good hours away from the community that they were able to use that before.
I, I, I understand. I, I, I see your, from, in, in your perspective.
Mm-hmm.
I get you, but there, there's other people who work different hours, who have different perspectives, right? That's why I wanna give an opportunity. We're trying to do the best we can for as many people.
I can guarantee, well, they, they open more hours. Well, that's great, but not for the working people.
People work all different jobs at all different times, right?
But three thirty, you close it, they close at three thirty. Who can get there by three thirty, a working person?
A lot of people work nights at restaurants or work, you know, all kinds of different hours.
I suppose, wow.
So, so we're trying to do the best, yeah. I think it's a very valid question. It's something we should all talk about as a town.
Okay.
You know, so we'll move forward with this. Can't make a decision on tonight, and I appreciate you coming out, so.
Do a survey at the town meeting.
I don't think, yeah.
You could do a.
That's, that's a mic key thing.
Mike?
Um, yeah, you could take a non-binding, what's called a sense of the meeting question at the town meeting. Um, or alternatively, if you scheduled the hearing you wanted to have maybe later in that same week, you could announce it at the town meeting. You could distribute a paper survey at the town meeting. You could.
A paper survey would be nice.
But that's the thing, what, what, I think by doing that, I agree, maybe that's a, another piece of information we can use in making a final decision. Um, you know, but we're, any way we do this is gonna have be flawed because of just the, the people, I get it, but.
Right, because you wanna capture a certain amount of.
Exactly. So I think that, you know, give an opportunity for people to come out at a meeting here, as I'm, I'm totally okay with doing a, what Mike just.
What I said was have multiple.
Yeah.
Measurements.
Yeah.
You know, maybe at the town meeting, at a, you know, meeting here, wh- whatever.
Yeah, I, I, I.
And at this time, uh, do they know how many people are using the transfer station, like, different days?
I don't have those numbers in front of me. I, that's something we can look into, you know, account of the transactions. It's not like the report I get, you know, or anything of that nature.
There's no, no real data for that.
Right. Right, and you can't just go by the numbers too because then, you know, you just don't have a chart for, I know. I know, shit, so how does different variables that go into it, right?
Yeah.
It's gonna happen like ten times with brush, so.
She must know when people are coming.
Yeah, I, we don't really have a very, uh, high-tech system, you know, capturing these. And I don't think I can put into, like, even an Excel, you know, database or anything of that nature. It's a lot of it's kind of handwritten, you know?
Just, just.
Yeah, alright. So I think that's all for today. So I'll, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion, Mike.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Grunwald?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. Alright, thank you, everybody.